...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming on this cold night.
It is warmer today.
Warmer than maybe our houses today. All right, we do not have anyone requesting to speak and no written communication, so do we have special committees?
Paul and I met again to talk about superintendent evaluation and had an additional conversation with a software developer and he asked that we express our desire to Dr. Festo at the year one BOCES that this software product be given aid yet. So it's our problem with going to call and I, you know, sending a message or towards the app and requesting a rest of the I didn't know.
We are able to do a test trial. You know, just kind of play around with them.
Yeah, he just submitted that information yesterday.
So we could, the board should see what the tool looks like.
Does this, does this suggest that we're going to adopt it because we haven't discussed it before?
No, 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 not at all. I think it's just a tool we're examining to see if it works. The format is very similar, we're still going through.
Are there other things we use that are similar that are adable?
There is no superintendent evaluation tool, no software period, like is there, are there other things that we use for different purposes that are in kind of that same category of a software tool that are adable? Or is it mostly hardware? I know, but now we've got us being, well, and we still, do we do this stuff, like the library stuff is adable?
No, it's all software.
But we, but I mean, those are all purchased through BOCES and we do get the adability back on. I'm just trying to answer you.
Yeah.
So I'm thinking through some of our software things and yes, I think we have done that with other.
Other software.
Other software has been purchased and aided.
Off the top of my head, I'm not sure if BOCES has any software evaluation tools such as this that they support.
There is no other tool for superintendent evaluation.
But there are other softwares that BOCES supports, obviously, um, software for example.
So it's a possibility.
We're not setting precedent by asking them to support software.
I would probably just explain to you while you're reaching out as opposed to it coming from me or coming from somebody sitting in an administrative position. I won't be a problem with it, but I would just explain to you in the process of the search, you're looking at your tool and you've been communicating with them and you go to request that you consider it.
And we, yeah, and we, I think, would also say that, you know, we have not decided to use this tool, but it's something that we're evaluating that will go, you know, a long way to us.
I don't think we'd bring it to the board unless it becomes adable and then the cost wise it is, you know,
worth it without the aid.
I mean, it becomes, I think, six, seven hundred dollars, you know, costs us with the aid and I think for that, I'd say it's well worth it given how the process was along with it. But without the aid, I don't think we recommend it, but I think we're just looking at it in the interim. We like what we've seen and Paul saw a lot of the same format we were, that he would worry if it did get a little sparring, we'd be working on it. So it is a nice tool, but.
And once, once, you know, I just had this email sent me yesterday, but once we get this demo of software up and running, you know, Paul and I would like to present that to the board as an example.
Is it trial free?
Yes. And it's not a trial, it's a demo software, you know, so we can just go in and look at it and how it works and, you know, see how they feed into each other and things like that. Yeah, we got the demo, so it's just an opportunity for us to be able to share that demo.
It was a surprise. A little long, actually. There are three items next. The first one is, as you know, we spent a couple of weeks talking about the faculty association. We had a representative come to town and we put a public presentation for us and Mrs. Conley followed up. Maybe about a month ago, we've got as well. And we did make the decision that we wanted to make a decision this evening when we had a full board here in terms of the level in which we felt it would be acceptable to adopt it. So I'm going to put it in front of you and I'll turn it over to you, Mrs. Conley, and she's here for questions too. And I guess basically you're going to ask for some STAR impact information, which we provided to you. And it's really your discussion to come to some conclusions so that if we do this, you have the time to do what you need to do. Do you have more to do by March 1st? Are you going to do it for next year? Are you ahead of your public plan? So go ahead.
Right, right. From the last piece of information that I had with the Board of Education, mainly focus on, you have the different levels here in front of you. So the examples that we ran through were group or level C and group or level D. So just as a frame of reference for you in front of you. And depending on the level that the Board of Education decides to go with, if they decide to adopt this, the STAR reimbursement impact is, was communicated anywhere from about $3,556 to $14,026. That's based on current numbers that the real property tax department gave to you. So just to give you an idea of the impact on STAR. And again, you know, it just depends on what level is any of the Board of Education's comfortable with. We would have to have a public hearing, as Dr. Chiu stated. We do have to advertise for that public hearing. It's an opportunity for the public to ask any questions. I would highly recommend that we have Nancy DiLardo come back for that public hearing. She's very knowledgeable in this area. She's done all the public hearings for any districts that have had them so far. We just need to, again, advertise for that public hearing in advance. And then after the public hearing, it's ultimately up to the Board of Education to decide, number one, if they want to adopt the exemption and then secondly, what level of the exemption they don't even want to adopt. It's important to note, once we adopt the exemption, you cannot rescind it. You can modify it or change it, but you cannot rescind it after you adopt the exemption.
You modify it in any direction?
Yes.
So you were thinking to do that at the first meeting in February?
I was just the first meeting in February to hold the hearing. And then either at that meeting or the very next meeting, you can pass a resolution. That's all you have to do, is pass a resolution, communicating that you want to, number one, adopt the exemption at what level.
One of the things we thought is if you can, you know, come to terms with what level, at least one or two, that's what the focus of the public hearing would be as opposed to making a whole another, you know, sort of debate from the board's perspective when the public hearing is being held. It really should represent what you feel is the best decision for the district and just presenting that to the public. So that's why, you know, we, I think it's important, you know, it's our recommendation that you really do hone in on that this evening and make that decision so that we can then let Nancy know for the first week of February, that would be the focus of her presentation. That's what you'd be presenting, the community would know. And then you would be ready to go ahead and do everything to meet that much of a standing. So it's open for your input in terms of, you know, how you're feeling and what you think.
Is it possible to do, to do an either or? Like if, are you, can you put it out for a vote, like either this level or this level? Or you have to just pick a lot to say?
It's your choice, the board has to make that decision.
I think, I think some boards that don't bind in. Type vote, if you're voting, you know, but I think.
It's not, it's not part of your voting resolutions.
So do we need to decide first if we want to do it?
Yes, yeah, right. And I think that at the last meeting, we were leaning more towards two, that doing that, that you wanted to see some more information, but yes, that's the first thing.
I think, I think that, you know, to, for, to maybe explain to the public why we're, you know, this, the challenge here is because really we're trying to, to balance two very important groups. One is the veterans groups who we want to, perhaps under the tax exemption, but also our other taxpayers who we don't want to transfer, necessarily transfer a huge burden to them. So this is why we're kind of in this quandary.
We've had a lot of information about it in the other schools in the region, we're looking at it and this kind of thing. So it really has come to the point in which the decision was.
The decision tonight, which is to move forward with, whether we move forward with the public hearing, then we have to decide if we are going to adopt the exemption or not. Is that how it's going to be?
Well, I mean, you could maybe, I suppose, from the input of the public hearing, but I think the intention of the public hearing is to go out with what your intention is. To say, we will adopt, we would like to adopt it and we would like to adopt it at this level. This will be the impact on our taxpayers. These are the reasons why, this is the impact on STAR. And then depending on what you hear from the public, I suppose, until the final stamp of approval is on there, you may say, wow, we didn't think of that. Maybe we do want to change it. But the intent is to go out with the decisive point of reference in which to conduct that public hearing. So you're clear about what you feel is in your best interest.
We wouldn't have a public hearing if we chose not to.
Correct, that's right, that's right. If, yeah, if you chose not to, that's absolutely right.
Yeah, so really time is just to determine if you do want to move forward, then scheduling a hearing and at what level are you considering? So Nancy can best prepare the presentation, present it to the public, you can get their feedback from the hearing and the public has a good idea of what level you're booking at or are considering. And then they can ask the appropriate questions based on that. And then you can make that decision that evening based on the feedback and the input you're hearing from the community.
Before you can form a resolution, is it a later?
And if we make a decision not to go forward, can you vote to go forward at a later date? Since once you vote, you can't rescind it, you can only modify it?
It wouldn't be required.
Right. Once you, if you say you don't want to do it, we don't have to take any action. You don't have to do anything at this time.
Right, but I meant, I'm asking in the future. So for example, if we decide on a level, we can moderate and we can't rescind it.
Correct.
This is not the only time you can vote on it because that's just.
Right, yes. So say you adopted one level and then next year, you know, you wanted to modify it to another level, you can. Or if you choose not to do anything before March 1st this year. We talked about it last year, actually, and we decided to hold to get some more information. So you can always, you know, look at it later.
I think to be clear though, once you adopt the exemption, you can't rescind it.
Yes, right, that, that I got.
And I think that that was one of the topics we've done discussion with you because other exemptions in the state, you can rescind.
I, I'll start. I think based on what we do know from the voters, from our survey, that we had quite a bit of feedback and more than, you know, a simple majority of the voters did say that they were in favor of the exemption. Granted, that was without any numbers attached to it, but they all did say that they were, you know, that majority said that they were in favor of it. So I would be in favor of.
Maybe should assess that first and then talk about those. That's the general consensus of the board.
Given what you says, I'm, I'm in favor of it also. I don't like what New York State Legislature did and doing it the way that they did it. They could have done it different ways where it didn't come down to this. And so, you know, ashamed of New York State and stuff. But yes, I am, I am in favor.
Yes, right. The next level of discussion will be about what level.
Is that it?
What's your thoughts?
I would say C also.
C.
We're all in favor of moving forward with the tax exemption at level C. So would you please make?
And then you'll have the public hearing. One option for that, that I think about is perhaps do you have it at 6:30? Depending on how heavy your agenda is, because you want to involve a budget at the time, starting budget. So you may want to do a public hearing, sometimes we've done that, 6:30, quarter to 7:00, have a public hearing and then return to the regular meeting so that your regular meeting is still on schedule, so that works for everybody. Just about, you can decide how you want to do that, but I know we've done that other times when we've had something that requires a public hearing. If it's a heavy evening.
Our line of four people to see about, whether they be, we're not sure what.
Um, but actually, I use it, this is good because we're doing a lot of sort of cleanup things that I did on our, there's been a lot of discussion about presentation on the board. There was a lot of information that was shared with you over the past couple of months in terms of looking at that as a, as a membership. And the meeting, again, I think it was the same meeting about a month ago, it was determined that because we didn't have a full board, we felt that everybody should at least be here to have that discussion, have some input as to how you feel about having somebody serve in that role. If this is the time perhaps, if this is not the time. And what we're all, really what we're talking about tonight is just philosophically how you feel about that. The process of how you do that, you have a lot of options. You could do it through an application process and you interview them. You could do it through some recommendations, through a committee structure, high school, there's all, you don't have to decide that if that were to be your decision. Really what tonight is about is sort of philosophically for me to terms with how you feel about that and whether or not it's something that you want to spend the time to research, to bring back to you in terms of the process.
As a superintendent, how do you feel?
It, you know, it depends on the role that they serve and it depends on how we utilize. I know one way the district, previously, before I was here, the superintendent's task force functioned in a different role for a period of time and had started to change when I was higher, but they were in an advisory role and that was one of the reasons the task force was established. It was a group of students who were really involved in things, would meet with the superintendent. Now, that started to rain and I'd like where it had been a year or two since that was happened, quite honestly. So it kind of went to now what we have with our recognizing students and teachers. But that was one way in which the board thinks it's going to bring impact on students at large in terms of issues that we bring to us. So the superintendent was the individual who was speaking and influencing that to the board. So the difference would be now you would have a student, you know, it's just how it's managed too, because you want certain of students to have a voice that they are the voting member and you just have to figure out how are we going to assist their opinions without, you know, knowing the background information that you took with you in that role because they can't have some of that information. Certainly, we always cherish what our students say and value it. It's just whether that's the right model to use. But either, I think in a way, you can do it, you know, one of two ways.
I think there are many models that, there are many, there are many models that I can envision for a student representative. And I'm not sure that, for many of the reasons you're talking about, that to ask one individual to be invited to the board, I think has been, that I'm completely, I'm not completely comfortable with because of questions like how representative are they? How much information do they have? High school is very diverse, we have a lot of different children, a lot of different needs and aptitudes. And to have one person kind of be the person that we turn to when we're discussing things, I think is, I would not feel comfortable with. But I think there are a lot of other models, including having a more of a liaison role is what I envision would mean most likely to me. But I think that that's something that in high school, we have a lot of good input. So anyway, that's, that's where my, my thinking is.
And I, I would appreciate any of this, but I would be concerned about the.
But I think that that's where the structure, you know, that we were talking about all the different ways that we were talking about comes into play. You know, that we would have the opportunity to create that structure and maybe it is, it turns into a group. Where one person representing that diverse group comes in for sort of different things. I think that, you know, the way that you mentioned that, saying, you know, our decision tonight is to decide whether to go or explore that. That's what I'm agreeing on.
I'd be interested in going back and visiting the superintendent's task force. I mean, I know we mentioned a few years ago about we've got a license, what that has set up, the intent, the original intent, what you got away from, because I think that's already a system that is pseudo in place. And then there could be some discussions about making sure that you work with them versus us looking at new models, you know, for specific needs.
I actually liked the idea. I spoke with a parent today who was, his daughter was the student representative and we discussed it. And I didn't see any context. I think it'd be positive for the, I think it'd be positive for the student body. You know, how, probably do it to a whole number of students, you do it. The conversation I had, I thought it was a worthwhile for the person to.
Over that, you know, it would require approval. Voter approval. So it does give you some time to sort of figure out how you're going to structure that model, if it's that model or perhaps a different model. And certainly what we're hearing is you feel like we don't have enough representation from our students to this board and we're not hearing directly from the free burning issues that are important to them. So I get, you know, sort of try to summarize what I'm hearing is you definitely want to come up with some kind of a structure that allows you to garner feedback that would be going to put out there. However, whether it is an actual person who's voted on by the voters or perhaps a model that is a piece of a task force or a liaison group or something.
In Hamburg, what I just did, what they did was it was a student by president. So the students voted on it.
And was it, is it an actual voting community board member as in the true nature of what's out there and that's allowed it? Or is it just?
I mean, they said, what they, what, what the parent could say to me was, you know, a student coming and sitting up in front of a group of adults is very intimidating. And so if there isn't someone there to, I don't know if you nurture is the word, who is taking on the wing, you know, then it's not, you know, it's not valuable because, and this is from the, you know, the student, that it's, it can be, it can be some activity, so. And in light of that, I don't, I just don't see how that's positive, how you do it.
I, I like the idea, my only hesitation is is now the right time, given, you know, should we wait for a new superintendent to be in place while we're trying to recreate this position, nurture this position? Or else it's going to be, you know, bringing in a new superintendent and dealing with all of that as well. So that would be my only thing is to, is it is now the right time is my question. Is this maybe a year too early until we have a new superintendent in place?
Establish those relationships because it's going to take.
That would be my only.
Your communication and my.
Hesitation.
If I can share, my, my experience tonight was on board in the 1990s. And it worked very well. We had a liaison committee of four, five or six students and they gave different points of view and everything. Not every single meeting, they were here, someone that wasn't in the committee was here at every meeting, but they didn't talk at every single meeting, but they gave some interesting insights on different issues that we found, you know, very pretty positive for us to be able to get to that. And it was a touch more informed, more like you had mentioned, the liaison we had that committee, it wasn't an official one person. I remember having more than one person talking, it was actually good for us to hear four or five or six different points of view over a huge period of time. So it was, it was a very positive experience as I remember it, it was two years ago, it was quite an experience.
So one of what we're trying to, it's not just so much figuring out a way in which to host students, again, becoming more directly involved with what's happening, with the level and learning and sort of structure, certainly doesn't have to be decided to make. The other thing, you do have a transform around now. You have a lot going on in the next, you know, few months as well as just the adjustment to a new superintendent and our communication, all those kinds of things. But I think it's important for the community to actually recognize that, you know, we really do value the way that our students are thinking and what they have to say and we want to find better ways in which for them to communicate that to us.
I'm wondering, some of these, like the group liaison, probably wouldn't require a vote as opposed to a student.
Right, we and I have a vote.
So I'm wondering if this, maybe this, for the next, we could work on, perhaps with our high school administration, work on kind of discussing some of these options so that we could either choose, we could choose to wait, we could choose to put it on the agenda, or we could choose a format to get student input that wouldn't even require a vote.
It would be, yeah.
So we have questions to kind of answer and some philosophical ones that I really think, probably, I, I think we need to help from the administration. I don't know what you all, if getting some sense to take a couple of months, um, maybe.
Yeah, there's a lot more going on here because we, I mean, we need to know why the task force isn't what it used to be and if there's, you know, there's not enough, what happened there, you know, figure out why that didn't work and what would work in its place or if it would work now, you, you know.
Years later, maybe just. Or what, what, what the, the high school thinks would work.
I actually, we sort of done something similar when I was at high school, but it was at the town level. And we weren't part of the town board, obviously, but it was very similar to the task force. And so, you know, we would discuss all that was being discussed here outside of the room and then we had a liaison from their board come to us instead of us going to them. Like we had a person from the board that would come to us and we kept abreast of what was going on. And then we would give our feedback to that liaison from the board and it wasn't always the same person. So that we were having input, but we weren't having to come in here and speak to a whole group of people. We would just be able to learn how the structure worked, you know, learn all that and then be able to give our feedback without it being a presentation situation, you know, so it was a little more.
Could, could we be on record that we're in favor of reading the students some kind of, or?
Increasing student involvement at the high school.
However, formal it may be, we can wait until we hear from the high school.
Work with the high school administration with them sometimes.
But it really was vague at that point, it really was. But it wasn't formal, it wasn't formalized, but it wasn't totally that, just to be clear.
I think that's a good direction, you know, with this difference in time and the high school staff, so how we think about that and some things to. Is that comfortable for everyone?
Yes.
How, how, how much time would we need if we? How, how, how much time would we need if we had to make a decision between resolution and?
Well, it would have to be part, what about sixty days? Ryan, how many days do we need for the posting of what's in the ballots?
Sixty days that it has to be posted in May, April.
So that would be the actual notification. So if the budget vote is May.
May nineteen.
Nineteen. So then we need it certainly by March, middle of March.
Does that seem like, or we could revisit it between, before that time to decide whether we wanted to move forward with the resolution this year, not before we've reversed it ever, or before it changes.
Yeah, we'll get some input from Mr. Pigeon at that first, but also allow you, even if you decide not to go forward, you've got, you may make a decision to do something else in the interim and revisit it next year and determine if you want to do an actual voting or not based on how this works. It's always an option.
I'm sorry, did we say what date or?
The first meeting in March, the board would follow up, Dr. Pigeon from Mr. Pigeon, whatever that date is.
We would need a decision at that date because I would have to notify the papers.
We don't have much going on.
Yeah, you can't.
All right.
We're not supposed to go forward until we're.
Right. Um, we just wanted to revisit the board goals. Uh, you know, in addition, we always have the goal of fostering academic achievement and sound education for all our students as well as practicing, um, fiscal responsible budgeting each year. But on top of that, every year the board comes up with some measurable goals that kind of help correct our efforts as well as kind of give direction to the district. Uh, this year in September, we came up with three goals, technology, curriculum instruction and finance goal. And, um, everyone wants to look through this goal briefly and see if they have any questions or concerns. Uh, as, as it states, we're, uh, we're supporting the school in achieving one-to-one devices at all levels by September two thousand eighteen. And the tech committee and professional development and smart school funds are all working towards those ends. We're also looking to, um, just always looking at school security advancements.
Mr. Wolf will be presenting in two weeks to the board as an update in technology. So that would be.
Curriculum instruction, we're, um, looking at a September two thousand sixteen, um, timeframe for the review and development of the new revised institutional action plan. And you can see we have some, some very, um, we have some goals that are, are very, very bold. We want to increase our graduation rate at the high school by two percent, which now that we're at ninety-four percent, that's a, that's a big, that's a big hurdle. But we're looking forward to achieving that. And seventy percent of elementary school students should be able to read at grade level, um, by the end of the year.
So we have a ton of information, Mr. Pigeon, including about current levels before and after. So let's see if they're just a simple.
And, uh, finally, we are, uh, one of our goals is to determine whether or not we are going to exceed the tax gap by, uh, March two thousand sixteen. And, um, the second goal is to assess high school facility needs to determine whether or not we're able to, um, project. And we, we went through a walkthrough so we certainly have succeeded in looking at that and decided that we're going to wait with that at home to learn the superintendent's report. I think Mrs. Pigeon put some dates out there and we'll just have to wait for the board to review for the week after we've put the capital committee to meet to begin the process. Questions?
I think that the first goal under finance, we had discussed a little bit, um, previously. And I think we, I think that this says it's revised, but it, um, has not been revised since our discussion about the wording of that goal. Um, uh, you know, I guess I, I should have brought, um, my notes on it, but I think what we decided was we needed not necessarily to think about exceeding the tax gap. We needed to think about what we were going to do to try and maintain programs. And, and think more carefully about how we would achieve that with one of many options being exceeding the tax gap. I don't, I mean, I. I think that we, we discussed the wording because I just feel like this implies that we are already thinking we need to exceed the tax gap, which we may, but we haven't had the budget discussion yet, so we don't know that yet. And if we have the budget discussion and that is the case, then we attack it, you know, with that in mind. But it, it just sounds like we're putting the cart before the horse when we phrase it that way before we've had the budget discussion. I just, just, I, I don't want to, I don't want to minimize the potential need because there's obviously.
Would have to decide by March.
A big, right. But given that I don't know anything else right now, I can't, I can't support that without, you know what I mean? I'm try, I'm not doing a very good job of, I'm not giving you a good, a good, um, replacement, which I hate to complain about things without having a solution. But if somebody could help me come to a solution about it, I would appreciate it. I just.
I think we did, you know what, I think we did. I think if we went back and looked at our notes, we could probably find a verb.
We did.
So we did, yeah, we did have that discussion. So I think we could probably go back and.
No, I mean. Would, um, okay, well, I think you said it very nicely, but you said, uh, with an eye on, on maintaining programs. We need to look at all.
Yeah, I would prefer that we said that as opposed to what, what it appears that we're saying.
I was trying to capture it.
Look at ways in which we propose a budget cap, maintain programs, this is very, very rough. To include but not limited to reductions, exceeding the tax cap discussions, use of reserves, you know, the typical budget type things. So not, not tax cap in isolation, but inclusive within all of those other decisions would be whether or not this is the year we're going to talk about.
Yeah, that would be, I, I'd like it.
And that's in the spirit of that stuff, right?
Yeah. And I, you know, by no means am I taking that off the table because that is literally a potential need. But because this year, the way the tax cap positions us, it would be a, a negative number. I think that the way that it's being discussed right now, our tax cap might be two percent, might be zero. Do we know yet? Yeah. So, I mean, even that's a vacuum. We don't even know what tax cap is. So to say that we might need to exceed two percent.
Well, we wouldn't even know yet until, right, with the governor's proposals, he, there's talk of maybe even putting two percent, flat two percent in there as an option.
Right. So we, we don't know if we need to exceed two percent.
Maybe even getting their factors, you know, reviews the governor's, you know.
Yeah, right.
Probably proposals or.
Always one of the options.
I think we're supposed to know some things by January thirteenth, when he does his, stay in the state.
Eight, I put it here.
Right. So hopefully we'll have more information.
Something else.
Okay, so let me, if I can repeat this again, let me show that, back into the spirit of tax level. Explore ways in which we propose a budget cap and maintain programs by evaluating factors to include but not limited to reductions, um, tax cap, you can say exceeding the tax cap, use of reserves, review of the governor's proposals, um, while also, all of the above with input from neighboring or any component districts. Because you do, you do want to make sure that we're including that you're going to input, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Does that capture?
Y'all run media over the holidays, every district in North State is having the same discussion.
They are.
About continuing costs and quality of the tax. We're not alone.
Yes, you know, when you say take heed but not limit it to, it's your. You could realize, you could talk about services, you could talk about, yeah, creative options. There's all kinds of things you can add in there, but at least you're indicating those are some specific things that we're going to do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then, of course, on top of that, we have three goals, which are just board goals. One is to, to identify the superintendent. We're well on our way. Uh, the other goal is to, um, begin an advocacy group with Sweet Home in Williamsburg. And we are also on our way to that, sort of that. And the third is to develop the superintendent.
We're well on our way with all of our people.
Now, yeah.
We should feel good about this. Really, is everything going on this year? There's been a lot of stuff going on.
I mean, it's the first time I've ever seen anything like this. Can we talk about this at some point?
Yeah.
This is just a form of information, just so you know what we're talking about. Okay. Now, in your group business, would anyone like to, uh, make a motion for new business ideas?
I'll make a motion. Just, just, oh, wait, just before, since the, in the statement, uh, was, um, are the prerequisites going to be included? Because that's what.
What the current graduation rate is or what the?
Is referencing, well, in particular, um.
They don't have to be, but it was just.
Well, but he didn't particularly not include, right?
Yeah.
Right. So what I was saying is, are the prerequisites going to be included? Because that's referencing how we, like, we're going to assess the new board. Because there's multiple ways in which to.
I think it's just a point of reference for you to have in front of you.
Okay.
As part of you, but that's all. I just think it's a point of reference to remind you.
But is that going to, is that going to be included at the point of reading curriculum basically?
Was that something different than what we're looking at?
No.
Same thing.
Yeah, it's the same thing.
It's the same. Well, I was just asking that since your, your question, for instance, having a special, I mean, do you want to? Not to be too far, you know, but.
I'm not sure where you're.
If you want to wait. Without having that specific in there.
I'm fine with the goal as stated.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the tool that the district is using. It makes sense for it to be the tool of use, right?
Right. That's how we decided, if we can do Tony's office, that would be the best.
I just wanted to make sure we're, if we're asking for an explanation actually, the fact, then do we want it explained until we did, because it really wasn't.
Yeah, no.
That's what makes sure we're not voting on saying, okay, and we want another explanation. And I wasn't trying to speak for you, just.
So now?
All right, I, I make a motion to approve items from A through G to A through H.
Any, uh, discussion? All those in favor of approving items G one, A through G and G two, A through H, please say yes. For the carries. Okay, um, you'll notice that there's a little change in our agenda today. After surveying other districts, we realized that we were the only district in the area that has two public, um, two opportunities for public comment at each meeting. So, uh, beginning today, we are going to have one time of public comment at the beginning of our meetings and not have the, the comment at the end of the meeting. We, however, certainly do continue to be interested in hearing what our community has to say. And in addition to our, uh, public comment in the beginning of our meeting, we also have several other ways that you can contact us if you are interested. Just go to our board website and we will see. And are there any follow-up back action items?
Yes. To schedule the public hearing on the veterans exemption for February second, Dr. Carisella to follow the board while starting the public hearing at six thirty. March first, or by March first, Mr. Pigeon will report to the board on the type of board student representation he suggests and to revise the finance board.
There will be some executive session this evening, so just, I'm not changing the motion for a adjournment.
I'll make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
All those are going to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you to Brandon for taking our meetings.
Nice, you guys just go home tonight, too.
I know. Taking the holidays on the way out.
Look at that, go out shopping or something.